Good evening and welcome to the Franklin Township Board of Education. Today is Thursday, October 21st. Can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Tsai.
Here.
Mr. Grippo.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Maris.
Here.
Mr. Potasnick.
President.
Ms. Singh. Dr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Stanley. President LaCour.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. Can you read the Open Public Meetings Act, please?
Yes. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, public law 1975, see 231 Sunshine Law, copies of this public meeting notice were sent to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, the Franklin Reporter, Tap into Franklin Township, Franklin Township Clerk Manager, District Schools, Offices, and Associations, PTO Presidents, and posted on the district website.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn to confidential session, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Who?
Motion to adjourn.
Nishida. And Bill.
Moved by Nishida, seconded by?
Bill.
By Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We adjourn to confidential session to discuss confidential matters, including a special education settlement and a worker's compensation settlement and a student matter. Minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists.
She may be thinking.
Good evening and welcome to the Franklin Township Board of Education. Today is Thursday, October 21st. We had adjourned to a confidential session to discuss a student matter, worker's compensation settlement, and special education. Minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Ed, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united as one.
Thank you. Lori, would you read the mission statement, please?
Yes. Franklin Township Public Schools embraces its diversity, fosters excellent educational innovation, and empowers all students to achieve their highest potential.
Thank you. I'm going to ask that we move our student liaison report up above all of our other presentations. So can I get a motion to adopt the agenda with that revision, please?
So moved.
Seconded by?
Second.
Who?
Nishida.
Nishida. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Akira Faulkner, our student liaison, welcome.
Hello. My name is Akira Faulkner, and I'm one of the Student Government Board of Education Liaison for this school year. Here is what is going on at Franklin High School. The annual club rush held early October was successful. The start strong testing and PSAT went off without issues. The homecoming tailgate is October 22nd, just before the game. Saved Halloween is October 29th from 4:00 to 6:00 in the C parking lot. It will be a trunk or treat this year. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. And now we are on to our annual district assessment presentation by Dr. Dan Laubrin.
Thank you, Ms. LaCour. Thank you, Board of Education. Thank you, members of the community who are joining us this evening. So as you know, each year, we report out on our state assessments from the previous year. Last year was an unusual year. We had two state assessments that happened in the spring. One was for our ESL students, the access test, and the other one was for our special education students with the highest level of cognitive need. And so we'll report on those two state assessments and also share a couple of other things as well. So important to note that some of our students last year learned and were assessed completely outside of school, while others were partly assessed and learned in school for some of the time and outside of school for some of the time. So we'll keep that in mind as we look at the slides. So our first report out is on our access for Ls. And this is administered annually to all students who are learning English. And specifically, we're trying to measure progress in learning academic English. So there's some description there on what constitutes the test, and there are six levels: entering, emerging, all the way up to reaching. And when you take a look at each grade level, you see that there is a variety of performances at each of those levels that I mentioned. And, you know, a lot of that has to do really with how long a student has been exposed to English and has been using English. So it's kind of hard to make any judgments about the variety. You expect to see that. That's typical. What, of course, is concerning when you look at that slide, which speaks to our experience last year with regard to students' learning in different contexts, is that number on the bottom, if you can see that, in 2020 and the year before that and the year before that, we typically have about 100-plus students who exit the ESL program, you know, in normal conditions. Last year, we were only able to exit 24. So that means we had a large number of students who, you know, were exposed to similar learning but weren't able to exit. Part of that, too, is, you know, students needed to come in to be assessed, and not every student's family wanted to come in to be assessed. So all of that factors into that number. With the Dynamic Learning Map Assessment, as mentioned, this is the alternative assessment for students with the most significant cognitive disabilities. We have four levels: emerging, approaching, at target, and advanced. And so what students do, we have a very small number of students who take this assessment, is they get assessed for elements, essential elements, in ELA, math, and science. So when you take a look, you see we had 33 students in English Language Arts and Math that were assessed in grades three through eight. And in grades five, eight, and 11, we had 11 students who were assessed in science. So when you take a look at the blue bars, that's English Language Arts, you know, approximately 2/3 or 70% were emerging, about 18% were approaching, 12% were at target. For math, the students were 63% emerging, 12% approaching, 15% target. These slides, of course, will be on the district website, so you'll be able to look at them really close and study them. This is the four-year graduation cohort information. So in 2021, our four-year adjusted cohort, we had 595 students in that count of students who were in our schools from grades nine through 12 at some point, the whole time, or some of them did leave the district, actually. So 535 graduated of the 595, 27 were retained. And that percentage of graduation is about close to 90%, but that number could go up because there are still some appeals of students who, you know, had to leave the district for one reason or another, and sometimes it's hard tracking those folks. So that number could go a little bit higher in the coming weeks. This is our graduation cohort by race. And this is our graduation cohort by demographics, gender, economically disadvantaged, ELL, and special education. And these are the different pathways that students use to graduate. If you look at the two bars on the left, you'll see that most of our students graduated in the traditional way. They passed their courses, their required courses, and they also passed the required state test, the NJSLA. And next to that, the smaller numbers, that's the substitute competency test. So they might have taken the ASVAB or PSAT, SAT. So they might have met it from a different test. Some of our students didn't meet it from any of those tests, but they used what is called a portfolio assessment, where they demonstrated outside of a testing environment that they can do those skills. You know, if given, if chunking it a little bit smaller and writing essays and doing math separately outside of that test, they can demonstrate it, then they can graduate high school. And of course, some students with an alternative assessment, that's written into their IEP. We did want to include our most reliable internal assessment that we've used for years in our district, and many of you are very familiar with it, and that would be iReady. So in grades one through eight, our students use iReady. It's an adaptive diagnostic tool. It gives a learning path for our students. It's very closely aligned to our state assessment, so we like to use that. We assess everyone three times a year: beginning, middle, and end. And there are six categories: mid-on-grade level or above, early-on-grade level, one-grade level below. One thing to keep in mind, that even though it's one-grade level below, that's kind of a wide range of performances, right? One-grade level below could be just a hair below that early-on grade, but it could also be all the way close to the two grades. So these are categories. It's not like a discrete score. And when you look at these bars, and again, you probably would have to look at this on the website to really see them closely, basically, the left column is the fall assessment, and the right column is the spring assessment. And so in the fall, for example, if I looked at grade eight, 34% at that time were early or mid-grade level or above. And by spring, about 50% were in that category. And that pattern holds up in grades one through eight. And this is the combined all students, grades one through eight. So approximately 34% of our students were early or on mid-grade level or above in the fall. And by spring, we had 53% of our students were in that category. And again, in that 25%, it's, you know, some of those students might have been very close to the lighter green 18 in the middle. So we'll keep that in mind. So this is the by race description of how students placed by springtime. So the number on the left is all students, and then you see we've broken that down by race. And we did want to just point out that our Hispanic and Latino students were about 39% on grade level by spring, and that's an area of focus for us. We are concerned, that's the group of our students that were, you know, was furthest away from the district average. So that's an area we're making sure to pay attention to. A question we get is, you know, what has been the impact of COVID-19 on learning? And this picture tells a story. In 1819, when all students took the test in person in school two springs ago, that was the breakdown of percentages. About 45, 54% were on grade level by the end of the year. And when you look here on the right, it's very similar. And that's actually quite disappointing to us because we, you know, if you were to compare our growth year by year by year, we've shown each year, we've done a little bit better. But when you take a look here, you know, two years later, we're right similar to where we were. And, you know, that's been the impact for us, that there wasn't that growth, that was sort of a plateau right there. So obviously, we dig our heels in and get to work, roll up our sleeves. This chart shows where students were assessed. The bars on the left are students who were assessed in school. The bars on the right are students who were assessed in places other than school. So in other words, they took the assessment from wherever their location was. And you can see, you know, slightly different in some grades, a little more different than others. But the sort of cumulative effect of that, if you take a look here, this shows our historical norm. So that's 1819. That's what the percentages were in the spring. When you compare that to 2021, this column is in-school percentages in the spring. This is our overall district. This is our in-school performance in the spring. And these are other assessments. In other words, same test, but taken in a different location outside of school. So if you look at our in-school, 31, 51% were early, mid, or above grade level. And compare that to the national average, it's actually the same. It's 51% national average. So yes, we're disappointed in where we are compared to ourselves, but compared to the nation, we're right on par with the nation. And it kind of shows, you know, we had typical learning loss, I guess is the word, or struggle. So what are we going to do? We're going to assess our areas of greatest instructional need. We're going to use the NJDOE's four principles of accelerated learning. We're already doing that. We're going to support foundational reading instruction, plan and deliver differentiated instruction, monitor progress toward grade level proficiency. And in grades six through 12, we're going to assess learning gaps, differentiate instruction, supplement instruction through ELA labs at FMS, both campuses, right? Essentials classes at FHS, too. We're going to use our local assessment data to monitor progress. So now this is iReady math. You'll see some similar outcomes here. There's that pattern of fall to spring. That's typical of what we usually see with iReady. Again, on the left is our district overall, and then to the right are our different racial category subgroups. And again, in math as well, similar to language arts, our Hispanic and Latino, or Latino students are farthest away from the district average. So we're focusing certainly on, you know, what can we do to address that gap? When you look at 1819 compared to 2021, you do see some difference here for math. So in 1819, about 59% of our students in the spring were on grade level. And in 2021, it was about 45%. So that was a dip of about 10, 14%. When you take a look at in-school or other, again, it's not exactly the same. And when you look at our in-school percentage here, which shows 39% of our students on grade level in math in grades one through eight, it's similar to the national, except 7% lower. And actually, you can see the 7% in the grade level below. We have about 7% higher grade level below, but our top two numbers are the same. Excuse me, 46 to 39, but that's where the 7% comes out. I said that incorrectly. So 46% for the national, 39% for us. The difference is seen in that yellow section right there. So what are we doing for math? We have revised and updated the curriculum units at Rubicon to include additional and supporting standards-based instruction. We are monitoring student progress to make our instructional decisions. We're using assessment data to analyze students' unfinished learning before implementing the grade level content. That's what accelerated learning is all about. We're using ST Math this year in the elementary schools, which has been a real nice pickup for us. It helps build students' problem-solving and critical thinking skills. We're providing professional development. We're using grade level meetings to dig deeply into the accelerated learning approach and these gaps that we're showing here in the presentation. We're using one-on-one coaching cycle to help our teachers embrace the accelerated learning model. We're targeting, in grades six through 12, we're targeting prerequisite skills. Using our new Envision Math Program, it's our first-year in-person implementation, which is, you know, just easier accessibility than just simply through the computer. Using formative assessment data, we're front-loading concepts and skills as an acceleration strategy. Administering our assessments, analyzing our data to monitor student progress. And that concludes the presentation. Do you have questions?
Thank you. Nishida, do you have any questions? I can't hear you. I'm good for now, thank you. Lori?
Thank you. I do not have questions.
Pat?
Dr. Laubrin, could you go halfway back in your slide deck there? What I'm interested in understanding is...
Can you pull your mask up, please, Pat?
I'm sorry?
Mask.
No, I'm going to speak.
If you pull your mask up, please.
All right. So, Dr. Laubrin, what classes are they actually in? So when you have something that's yellow, it says it's a grade below, so you have people that are sitting in a classroom that are in grade six, and they don't fully belong there?
No, that's just a performance category. It's saying that the performance on the assessment is more typical of students in grade six, even though they're in grade eight, if that's the example we're using.
Does that mean that that child, if the children are being picked from the deck, does that mean that they do not be in that classroom? It seems to be a very, very wide spectrum. We didn't say the children, and would that be the case? I would say that would have been six. Do you have a very wide group for 23 students?
So in any class, in any grade, certainly, but even in a classroom, you have a wide variety of performance levels. It's why we differentiate instruction, because not every kid is at the same spot. Even though maybe they're struggling in math, they might have an A+ in science, for example, and be doing well in something else. They belong in the grade. But we need to do our best to help them beyond grade level for math. So, you know, that's a challenge that even in an honors class or an AP class, you'll have a wide variety of performance ability in any class. So, and it's really typical of a whole grade.
Dr. Laubrin, if I may, I think the other thing to remember, Pat, is this is also a snapshot in time. So this is one isolated test. So any child, you know, any child who's taking this test could have poor performance on a particular day. That's complicated this year in the results that you're looking at by some students being in school, some students not being in school, you know, some students who may have been getting help, some students who may have been trying to take this test in their bedroom with three other people in it. So there are a lot of variables that come into play when you make a decision as to, you know, a student's academic performance. We do rely on criterion-based tests like iReady, which is standards-based, criterion-based testing. But it's only for a portion of what the academic decisions are. So you might have a kid that's represented in that yellow right there, who really, because of a poor test day, the elements, you know, whatever conditions they were taking the test under, failure of the computer at home.
What's your idea?
Yeah, lots of variables that come into play. So, you know, it'd be unfair to characterize that a student who might be in that yellow on that particular day is truly in the yellow all the time.
Madam President, with due respect...
I have another question.
Ms. Stanley, we all are speaking with our masks on. Can you please put your mask on, please?
I'm going to speak right away, too. But I have my mask on.
You don't have your mask.
My question is, do they, when you have grade six teachers, do they have four kids? And it's a very wide group. Well, how are they, how is the teacher in the classroom, on the regulation basis, expressing each of those problems?
We plan for instruction by differentiating. We're aware of, and as Dr. Ravalli says, it's, there's this data for that day when they take the test, but there's also formative assessment all the time that goes on in the classroom. So a teacher even could be surprised by a given day, but is aware that there is this continuum, you know, this variability of performance levels on any given day, and they plan for instruction that way, so that they'll put kids in groups, they'll give this group what they need, and they'll give this group what they need.
I think the other piece that's missing is, and perhaps, and Dan, oh, sorry. Dr. Laubrin, you may have articulated this, but you're looking at a composite score. For our teachers who have access to this data, they're looking at an individual child score, which is further broken down by subcategory into, you know, reasoning, or if it's math, reasoning. Give me some other examples, Dan, off the top of your head.
Geometric, algebraic expressions.
Right, algebraic expression. And so then what they'll do is they'll drill deeper into the, they'll drill deeper into that individual child, and they might find commonality amongst all the children in their particular class, at which time they'll review. Or they might find one child or three children having similar challenges, and that's where they'll group them together for a learning center. So that's the advantage of utilizing a program like iReady. And there's other competitors, to be honest with you, but it allows a teacher to drill a little deeper and to inform their instruction, which is exactly why we utilize it, so.
So at no time during the year, do you have a bunch of kids?
Pat, can you please pull your mask up, and then you could hear yourself? Pull your mask up properly. Properly put your mask on?
I'm putting this mask on. I'm trying to...
Okay, then, well, you...
Then I'll put a pass out in light, if I have a mask on.
Okay.
I have a health issue, okay? So at no time are you going to have all the kids in grade six, one of you below, one of you right there? You're going to have kids that are actually in grade five, right?
Well, that's what I was saying before, is, again, it's a test, and it's kids in that grade because, you know, they're in that grade, they were born in that time, and they progressed relatively aligned with their classmates. And we, you know, even if we were to do that, you're still going to have variability within any class, much less a grade. So this is us describing a performance. That's what that is.
Question, Bill?
One second.
Yeah, Dan.
Pat, please pull your mask up.
No.
Then you're going to be asked to leave.
I'm not leaving.
That, well, the rules are, Pat, that you have to have your mask. The rules are...
I have the mask on.
It's supposed to be covering your nose. It's supposed to be covering your nose, Pat. That's what the rules are. If you don't like the rules, go to Trenton.
I have the mask on.
Pull your mask up.
Question?
I think we should go.
Yeah, Bill, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, two things. Will we be able to get a copy of this online? Is that okay?
It's going to be online tomorrow. Yep.
The other thing, I've got some experience with iReady, right? So the communication with parents, Dan, how's that working out? I know with the pandemic, there's been a lot of at-home instruction and all. Is that continuing now where the kids are working iReady, a link? Because that helps with the differentiation, with the parent conferences and all that. How do you find that's going?
Yeah, we increased that last year. We had, we started some parent data nights, and we've asked all of our principals to send out baseline reports even more frequently than we have in the past. So we're going to, we are continuing that this year. Our teachers also, in teacher training, this was our whole focus this morning, was on using data in ways that, you know, obviously make sure our parents are understanding the report and can use it to support what the teacher is looking to accomplish in the classroom.
Yeah, so they can follow the growth of their own child...
Yes.
...in communication with the teacher and all that stuff, yeah.
Absolutely.
And the point you made about differentiation, that really answers Ms. Stanley's question. The teachers are trained in differentiating their groups.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the only way you're going to close the gap, by informing instruction, so.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Walter, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Ed?
I just want to say thanks for the presentation. I mean, obviously, the pandemic was a tough time, and mostly, I would expect from everything that we've seen and the struggles people had at home, to almost go backwards. What you're saying is it's kind of been flat, and for us, that is sort of backwards in that we haven't been able to make the progress we had been making year over year. How does that track with neighboring schools and what they're seeing? I know we're not just in isolation, and we're comparing with national data, but you have friends in areas. Is that about what other towns have seen?
Yeah, there was a famous report on the NWEA assessments, which is much like iReady, and, you know, at least for the kids who were assessed, it was a similar trajectory, but what they didn't do as good a job at accounting for is what iReady did, was kids who were not assessed or assessed outside of school. So, you know, our data shows what kids did if they were in class and what they did if they were not in class, and that average, you know, is right on, actually, our in-school average is right on par with the ELA national average. So, there's thousands, hundreds of thousands of kids who took this iReady assessment. So, across the nation, it is very similar, and I've heard that districts aren't a similar spot with that, yeah. I like to say we've done way better than everybody else, but we're about the same.
We'll experience the same pandemic, so that's...
Yeah, yeah.
Harmless. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Thanks, Dan, I don't have any comments.
Thank you.
Arteman? Dan, thank you very much for an excellent presentation.
No problem.
And now we are on to our public hearing on our Student Safety Data System, or SSDS Annual Report, and that's Mr. Wilson.
While Mr. Wilson's getting set up, I know that the masking does bring on both anxiety for many board members, and Ms. Stanley's refusal to put her mask on and cover her nose is probably causing consternation, because we have a school policy that we ask both staff and little students to follow, and they find a way to do it. And I wonder if, maybe if we took a 10-minute recess, we could try to address the issue and, out of respect for Ms. Stanley, and not make a public scene of it, and so we can keep the meeting going forward. That would just be a suggestion or recommendation.
So, you're asking to call a recess?
I would suggest we call a recess to see if we can resolve the issue, rather than just have help.
I don't think a recess is necessary. I think that Mrs. LaCourte is pushed, she has been hassling me and giving me specifically a hard time. And the issue is that I am not sick, and I have it over three-quarters of the thing, and I am having a very hard time hearing anybody here. Now, I am an elected member of this body, everybody's got the mask on, and I'm having trouble hearing everybody.
Again, Ms. Stanley, I would just recommend that we take a 10-minute recess.
Mr. Fatoznak, please. Okay?
I second.
I would like to second the motion to go in recess.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We're gonna take a 10-minute recess. Pat, if you'd like to go outside and get some air, okay, then figure out how to properly wear your mask. So, we're gonna be adjourned for 10 minutes. Thank you. Okay, thank you. And now we have Mr. Wilson discussing our Student Safety Data System Annual Report.
Thank you, President LaCourte. I wanted to start tonight's presentation by showing some of the slides of our students during their turn back to full-time, in-person learning and school activities. You know, the last 18 months, which includes all of the 2020-2021 school year, have created some challenges for our students. So, I don't want to, I don't have to go into all of that, but one of the things that you will see tonight through our dis-presentation and the public hearing is that we are aware that our students are going to have to, just like they had problems during the last 18 months, having to adjust to working from home, limited social interaction, and isolation. Likewise, this new school year is going to bring some challenges. Our students are going to have to transition to full-time school and being back to socialization with their peers in person. So, we know that that's going to bring us some challenges, and we are trying to do some things to prepare for that. We'll talk about some of those things during the course of this presentation. The SSDS report, or commonly, which is also referred to, is as the school safety, I'm sorry, the Student Safety Data System, is the Department of Education's way of tracking all of the suspensions that occur in a school, whether they be in school or out of school. It tracks all of the reports of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and records them, and it also records and tracks the methods that school districts use to train their staff and students on following the HIV policies, and what kinds of procedures are in place to create a safe and healthy school learning environment. So, tonight, through our presentation, our goals are, again, to increase student academic achievement, to provide training and resources to staff that will help them understand and support students, and to maintain district policies and procedures to ensure student and staff's safety. Okay? So, supporting our goals, we do a couple of things. We train, we provide training for our staff. We'll talk about some of those things, you know, social, emotional, learning, cultural and linguistically, responsive teaching practices, resiliency training. We monitor our schools to make sure and get a sense and a feel about the culture and the climate. We do regularly, regular meetings with our administrators to look at data regarding student behaviors and performance, and we can... And we conduct surveys with our students and our staff to get a sense and a feel about where they are and what their needs might be. We continue to provide positive behavior supports, using that positive behavior framework to train our teachers and to teach our students about the importance of good behavior. I wanted to show a brief clip about resiliency, featuring one of our staff, Darren Palmer. Sorry about that, I'm rushing here. Okay, so if you want to just start that really quickly?
...our collective journey gaining awareness about trauma-informed learning environments, which was sparked during a workshop about resiliency and adverse childhood experiences.
Can't hear it.
Yeah. So, in essence, what Darren was talking about is many of our students come to school, and especially now, following this pandemic, with adverse childhood experiences, were ACs, and that those experiences have an impact on how they perform in school. So, the important thing for us is to understand that as we are dealing with those students.
Having three or more ACs not only increases the likelihood of a negative health outcome...
So, when I look at all of the data from the last school year, from September 2020 through June 30th, 2021, you will recall that a large portion of that time, students were not in school. And then when we brought them back, we brought them back on a limited situation, on cohorts. So, during that period of time, though, especially from March through the end of the school year, there were six incidents of student suspension. Four of them were involving substance abuse. In fact, really, four of them were centered around students with vaping material, and two of them were physical aggression. So, not a lot of incidents, and with regard to incidents of HIV, there were four complaints that were lodged, and all four were unfounded. They were, you know, could, they were bad behavior, but they did not meet the criteria for harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and our schools handled them in accordance with our school policies and our student code of conduct. With students coming back to school, one of the things that we feel is very important in helping them to readjust to school life is to teach expectations. Now, we do that through PBS anyway, but what we're continuing to do is to do that, and continuing to reteach those expectations to help them acclimate back into school. So, we recognize that we're going to need to do that. This is an example, one of our classrooms at Pine Grove, you might, some of you may recognize Tuxedo, who is the model student and the model PBS student, who demonstrates for our students those things that they might need to do. Okay? All righty. Somehow we've lost our connection. So, I also, I'm just going to continue. One of the other things that we try to focus on, there we go. Way? Good.
My face on.
Move it. Okay. Is building positive relationships. That is a must, positive relationships between our teachers and our students. And that means more than just being nice and being kind to students. It is developing meaningful relationships and understanding both ways between our teachers and our students, and our students and our staff, because it is when students have those, have to build those positive relationships with their teachers, that they become very, the relationship fosters meaningful experiences, meaningful education. You all may recall a favorite teacher that you had, and understand that that connection made you feel like you wanted to do the best you could for that teacher, that you wanted to go above and beyond. So, we recognize that, and that is one of the things that we also do for our teachers. Classroom management strategies are also very significant, very important, especially now. We provide a number of resources for our teachers, and this is just one, shows 19 kinds of ideas that teachers could use for small classrooms to help manage and promote There are some other things that we do. We have a number of activities, actually, programs and experiences for our students. We have mentoring at the high school through our Great Expectations Program. We have recognizing student achievement, both in school and out of school, with our Grades for Life. We have a student, high school students, working with elementary, I'm sorry, high school students working with middle school students to develop and foster a sense of connection and importance to teach leadership and good decision-making and skills. So, through the Connections Program, which is a program that operates all year round, so they do things during the school year as well as during the summer. And a number of other Franklin Family First has middle school students working with elementary school students. Yoga mindfulness and Teen Pet High School Programs that also have students working with other groups of students. Okay? So, I've kind of been very quick, because there wasn't an awful lot of data to explain regarding student behaviors regarding, in terms of suspensions and harassment, intimidation, and bullying. But that is the information that was reported for the 2020-2021 school year through the Department of Education. Part of this presentation is also to review the district's HIV policy and also to talk about internet safety and the protocols that the district has in place to address internet safety. So, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, HIV, we've all been familiar with it, we've all heard it, it's a buzzword, but we are guided by, in public education in New Jersey, the state, the Department of Education's definition of what harassment, intimidation, and bullying are. And it is, any gesture, and it's important that they include this part first, any gesture that's written, verbal, physical, electronic, whether it's a single act or a series of incidents that is preceded or motivated by, and this is very crucial, motivated by the victims' membership in a particular group or class, or a distinguishing characteristic, okay? Can take place on school bus, take place on school property in our schools. It also can substantially disrupt or interfere with the orderly operation of the school or the rights of other students, and has the, or has the effect of demeaning, insulting any student or group of students, and ultimately, all of that would create a hostile educational environment for the student by interfering with the student's education and causing, or, and by severely causing physical or emotional harm to the student. Okay? So, the criteria that our anti-bullying specialists use to determine whether an incident qualifies as a HIV incident are, and again, the number one, and the first thing, it has to meet this criteria first, it must be motivated by the victim's membership in a protected group or class, or a distinguishing characteristic. If it does not meet that characteristic, if it doesn't meet this criteria, it can be bad behavior, and typically is, that is a violation of our student code of conduct and is dealt with by the building administration in that way. So, that is the first criteria, though, that we use in determining whether an incident is categorized, meets the criteria for a harassment, intimidation, bullying situation. Okay? Has the effect of insulting, demeaning, embarrassing, causing physical harm to the victim or the victim's property, and creates a hostile learning environment. So, here's the important thing. What do you do if you are a student or an adult, and you see or feel that you have been harassed, intimidated, or bullied? Well, I like to think of it like this. Any incident of bad behavior needs to be brought to the attention of some school administrator or someone who can do something to stop it. I don't necessarily, I mean, we're talking about HIV, but bad behavior is bad behavior. It's a violation of our student code of conduct, it should be addressed. So, whether you think it is harassment, intimidation, or bullying or not, if it's bad behavior and you see it, report it, or tell someone who can report it. And the individuals that you can tell who can stop it are our teachers, our counselors, and the anti-bullying specialist who's assigned to each school, who's advertised, posted, they've posted all over, it can be the principal, it can be someone at the board office, the central office, typically, all of these individuals... It can be someone at the board office, the central office, typically. All of these individuals, if they don't know what to do, they know who to go to to make it stop, and we do address that very quickly. All right? The last part of this is the internet safety protections that the district puts into place. The Children's Internet Safety Protection Act requires school districts to develop and ensure education is provided to every student regarding appropriate online behavior. Okay? The Franklin Township Public Schools does the following. We protect student use of electronic communications by assigning students email accounts, which are processed through the district server. That server has filters which block inappropriate materials from school-based computers and Chromebooks and which require an adult login to override. And we utilize something called, a software package called GoGuardian that sends alerts to our administrators, to our counselors, and to those teachers assigned to the student when a student attempts or to access restricted materials, or if they're looking up stuff, you know, that might cause harm. All right? Students in grades three to 12 are provided education via assemblies, coursework, and the description of all of the things that we do and the consequences are listed in our student code of conduct. Okay? I would like to end this by sharing some of the, this was, these were interviews with some of our students. They're only a couple of seconds long, so I want to give them some time if we could, if we can hear them.
How is SDS going for you so far?
It's actually going really well because I expected I was like, going to be a hot mess the whole time, but everyone's like pretty welcoming. And the staff is actually very supportive of everyone and anything. So they're very welcoming.
Nice. Are you happy to be back in school?
Super. I am super happy to be in school.
What is lunch like here at Elizabeth Avenue School?
So, I like it so much.
Likes school and likes lunch.
Great at Hamilton Street Campus.
Thank you so much for joining us, Miles. So how is middle school going for you so far?
Um, so far, it's, it's pretty good. You know, considering the circumstances, everything is different. We have social distance. We can't sit with people who, that we want to at lunch, but overall, I think the school's doing really good and it's a good school
So, very good. Thank you for, this is our presentation. Now, if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Orville, and thank you, Sharon, very much. Mike, do you have any questions?
No.
Ed?
No.
Walter?
No, thank you, guys.
Bill, do you have any questions?
No.
Nishida?
No.
Lori?
Thank you for the presentation and thank you for sharing the perspective of the kids. It was a bright spot. Thank you.
Artiman?
No questions.
Okay. And I don't have any. So now, can I get a motion to open for comments from the public on the Student Safety Data System Annual Report only? Moved by Nishida, seconded by Lori. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment on the SSDS report is now open to the public. Please come up to the microphone. If you're over 18, state your address, but state your name. And it's three
Seeing no one, I move we close public comment on the public hearing.
Motion to close public comment by Ed, seconded by?
Second.
Walter, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment on the SSDS report is now closed. John, can you do a roll call, please, on A1?
Yes. Do we have a motion?
Gee, I'm sorry. Can I get a motion to move A1, please?
So moved.
Moved by Artiman, seconded by?
I'll second it.
Ed, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, John, can you do a roll call on A1, please?
[inaudible]
Huh?
[inaudible]
Oh, to move it?
It's okay. There's no money.
Oh, yeah, it's fine. Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. Now, we're on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, and I'll keep it very brief. I do want to thank Mr. Wilson, Sharon, and all those involved for his report this evening. It's an annual requirement. Last year was an unusual year, but you did a wonderful job. And thank you for highlighting the many things that are happening in the district to help positively impact the school environment. So keep up the good work. Data report, thank you, Dr. LaGrin. Thanks to the curriculum office and all those folks that helped put that report together. As I said a little bit earlier, please understand that that was an unusual year last spring. Notice, we usually have a whole, a number of results to report with regard to state criterion-based testing. State testing, other than the DLM, which is for a small population of special needs students, and access for L, which is our ELL population, there were, there was no other state testing program. However, there was a state testing program that we are actually in the midst of the window of, which is shortly closing. And once that closes, we'll have data. That's called the START Strong. And START Strong replaced last year's New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. And we'll utilize that data. We'll, we'll combine it with the data that you saw tonight. Again, because, you know, that was unusual data that we collected last year, given some home, some in school. And we're not going to allow just that to inform our instruction, but we'll use some of the SMART, START Strong data, as well as a lot of the information that the teachers are gathering as we started the year, already a couple of months ago, believe it or not. So thanks, Dr. LaGrin. Thanks to your department. Good job. And lastly, well, I do want to mention on the agenda tonight, and I wanted to highlight it just so folks understand, there is a calendar change tonight on the agenda. The calendar change adds Friday, June 24th, as a school day, which is the new last day of school for the 2021-2022 school year, thus allowing for the addition of a new school holiday on June 17th in recognition of Juneteenth. As a reminder, there are three emergency closing days built into the school calendar, so we retain those with this change in date. And that allows us also, as you're well aware, in previous years, the last day of school then becomes the first give-back day. So if we have days that we don't use because of snow, June 24th will now become a give-back day. So we, we added, we may take it away, but of course, that's weather-dependent. And then last but not least, you know, thanks to the kids, the teachers, everybody, the families. This has been an extremely trying first few months of school. I can't believe I'm saying this, but we're near the end of the first quarter. And honestly, in the schools, as witnessed and as you heard from the kids, they really are doing a wonderful job. The teachers are doing a great job, administrators, support staff, parents, everybody's working together, and it's not easy. We've got kids coming in, kids going out, kids quarantining, kids coming off of quarantine. It's something new every day. And our families are super cooperative and our faculty doing a wonderful job. And I couldn't be prouder. I couldn't be prouder of each and every one of them for the work that they're doing every day. So that's it for us. Thank you.
Wow. So I'm going to start by echoing what you just said. Thank you to everybody and everybody working together. The kids, the parents, the teachers, the staff, the administrators, and even the board, working all together so we can get done the business of educating our kids, because that's actually why we're here. I'm going to keep this really short. We're really proud of our green team from Hamilton, from Franklin Middle School Hamilton Street Campus, who achieved a Silver Certification, as well as the Digital Star School Award from Sustainable New Jersey for Schools. The ceremony was taped, and the link will be posted on our website shortly. It was on Facebook, but it, they had issues right before they got to Franklin. And we, this group is also in the running for a grant from this organization. And the ceremony will be held early next month, so stay tuned to that. Also, Project Graduation is holding their clothing drive on this coming Saturday from 8:00 until 1:00. So please donate your gently-used clothes, curtains, stuffed animals, whatever. Again, more information on that is on the website. And I would just like to say that thank you for being understanding of, we had a little disruption. And we have rules, and we have an executive order from the governor. And whether or not we agree with the rules that happen, we still have to follow the rules. And there's a process in government in general, if you don't agree with a particular policy and what to do about going to change it. And when something happens from Trenton, the recourse isn't, the, we don't change it here. You change it in Trenton. So I would like to thank everybody for being understanding and also for following the mask order. That's what we have to do. Our kids do it, as you saw in the video. Our kids are really used to it. Our staff is doing it. And as board members, we're kind of held to a higher standard. And we're supposed to be the role models for what's happening in our schools. So, you know, we have to follow the rules whether or not we believe in them. So thank you. And that ends my board president report. And now we are on to comments from the public. Five minutes per speaker on agenda items only. Can I get a motion to open public comment?
So moved.
Moved by Artiman, seconded by?
Second.
Lori, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment on agenda items is now open.
I'll second that, Bill.
There's a motion to close public comment by Bill, seconded by Ed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda, comments from the public on agenda items only is now closed.
President LaCourte?
We, yes, Ed?
I move we dispense of items six, seven, committee and liaison reports, which can be found in writing on the website. And they've all been provided in advance to the board. It's been a little bit longer of an evening with a brief pause. And that's my motion.
Motion to put our committee reports and suspend them for this evening and put them on the website. By Ed, seconded by?
I'll second.
Artiman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so if you're looking for committee reports, please check the website. They'll be posted there. And all the board members, as Ed said, have had an opportunity to read them. And now we are on to our new business.
So in the interest of time, I will not list every item today, but I would like to make a motion to move the following. R1, M1, A2 to A19, B1 to B12, C1 to C5, and P1 to P4.
So there's a motion to move R1, M1, A2 to A19, B1 to B12, C1 to C5, P1 to P4. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Nishida? Okay. Any discussion?
I just have one item. I'm going to be voting no on A16, which is the vaccination policy. And as I'd mentioned in previous meetings, I do firmly believe that staff should be required to be vaccinated unless there is a medical or religious reason for the safety of our staff member and also for the young ones, our under-12 population that doesn't have the ability to be vaccinated currently and are vulnerable to the COVID-19 virus. And so I'll be voting no on that again this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Ed, any other comments from board members?
Bill, do you have any comments on anything? No.
Nishida? Lori?
No.
Walter?
No.
Mike?
No.
Artiman? Okay, John, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Disai?
Yes.
Mr. Grippo?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Maris?
Yes.
Mr. Potasnik?
No on A16, yes on everything else.
Noted. Ms. Singh?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
President LaCourte?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And now we are on to comments from the public. Five minutes per speaker on any topic. Can I get a motion to open public comment, please? Moved by Mike, seconded by Lori?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment on any topic is now open. Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address.
President LaCourte, I have a public comment that was submitted via email.
Oh, yeah. Nope.
No.
Well, what did you do to the mic?
I have a public comment that was submitted via email to the reopen@franklinboe email address. If you'd like, I would read it.
Yes, please.
This is from Stephanie Mack of 2508 Holland Drive. I would like to suggest additional food items for lunch. Some children don't eat red meat or are vegan, so additional options should be provided or another food vendor. My daughter states it's the same selection for lunch each day. A suggestion would be maybe give the kids a lunch survey asking their opinions of the quality of the lunch they receive or additional options they would like to be added to the menu. Many students may, might also complain of the lunch not being tasty or undercooked. School lunch options should improve if students don't consume lunch or famished all day. Students not having proper lunch selections, quality, can contribute to poor academic performance. I hope these suggestions help to make some immediate improvements or changes. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter.
Thank you. Are there any others? Okay, so what we've done is we've created a website. Mary, what's the, not a website, an email. Could you explain the process, please?
Sure. It's, the email address is reopen@franklinboe.org. And members of the public who are not able to attend the meeting are allowed to email comments or questions to that email address. And then I will read them into the minutes through public comment this way.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to make a comment on any topic? Five minutes per speaker.
Seeing no one, I make a motion to close public comment.
Motion to close public comment by Artiman, seconded by Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment is now closed. And now we're on to good of the order. Bill, do you have anything for good of the order?
Interesting work, yeah. But I was very proud of two Franklin warriors this past Sunday at St. Matthias. Emily Chavez, a Franklin High School sophomore, and Michael Torato, a Franklin High School junior, actually gave part of the sermon on a youth service project that they did in Trenton this summer for an entire week, representing the youth of Franklin Township. So I was really proud to see the warriors in a whole different audience, and I told them so afterwards. My other comment, I'm going to save on the electric buses feasibility study till the next meeting.
Thank you. Nishida, do you have anything for good of the order?
No.
Lori?
No, thank you very much.
Mike?
Mike.
Ed?
Just briefly, to remind people to vote, you can start voting this Saturday. There's a new thing this year called early voting. We kind of got along with a lot of the states that we've seen on the news where they're saying early voting. saying early voting, and we're like, what is that? Well, in New Jersey, we have that now. It starts on Saturday, and it's every single day up and through Election Day, which is November 2nd. In addition, you can still request a vote-by-mail application, and ballot will be sent to your home, and you can return that via postage-paid envelope or to one of the secure drop boxes in your own county. In this case, hopefully, you're voting in Franklin if you're watching this, but if you're not, thank you for joining us. And you can also vote on Election Day in person, just like normal, and that's on Tuesday, November 2nd.
Thank you. Walter, do you have anything?
Not tonight, thank you.
Artiman?
Well, thank you.
Okay, so tomorrow, no, I'm sorry, on Sat, yeah, Friday, tomorrow, is homecoming. So, if you can attend the game and support our warriors, our kids have worked really hard, that would be great, and happy Halloween, and please continue to support your school-sponsored organizations. Look for information on our website, franklinboe.org. And to echo Ed, please vote on November 2nd. And thank you, and our meeting is now adjourned.